Hi, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, what is it, June 30th Board of Selectmen's meeting. Sort of like a special-
Halfway through the last day already.
Yeah, halfway through the year. Sort of like a special Board of Selectmen's meeting, talking about the town managers' goals and objectives. And that's pretty much what we're going to be discussing today. But having said that, we should still do the Pledge of Allegiance. Chris, you want to lead us?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open Board of Selectmen's meeting. Anybody submit anything for Citizens Update? And there's no one here right now, so we'll bypass that. So what tonight is, is talking about goals and objectives for the town manager, Bill Keegan. Over the last couple of weeks, we've all submitted our own little thoughts of what we could use as goals for Bill going forward through this year. And then there was Leah who came up with a beautiful three-page goal and objectives. And having said that, she did a wonderful job. We obviously know who in the room has done this once or twice before. And having said that, I think we're going to let Leah go through, you know, her flow sheet, which also includes everything we also submitted. So Leah?
All right, great. So like Doc said, we've all sent our goals in and then we could see them and kind of compile them. So that's a little bit of what I've done. I've kind of taken the input from everyone, including Bill himself, and tried to bucket everything into four larger goals. So I think we can run through those and then see where there's maybe redundancy, you know, or things that maybe go in someone else's bucket. And then hopefully, we can come out of this meeting with some goals and objectives for Bill for the fiscal year that actually starts tomorrow, right? So-
That's right.
So, you know, if we can get this finished up by tonight, that would be ideal. So what I'll do is I'll just, the framework of the goal, the first goal is protect and enhance the financial health of the town. The second goal, protect and enhance communication and engagement. The third goal, protect and enhance business and economic development. And then the fourth goal, protect and enhance town operations. So as Doc said, there is a three-page document that has a number of different specific objectives under each of those four goals that dig into a little bit more detail. I figure we can run through each of those. And again, this is really like accumulation of everything I think we've been talking about for the last year, kind of leading up to these. And then, you know, maybe we can discuss what this means as far as us doing like a mid-year check-in in December, and then even using this as like the annual review process, you know, depending on where we fall. But, you know, Bill would really be working towards the goals and objectives that we've defined for him. And, you know, in fairness to Bill, it's going to be hard without goals and objectives. So I think that this is something that will prove to be a positive for both you and the board. All right. So the first one, starting off with protect and enhance the financial health of the town. Some of them are just kind of table stakes, but continue to work with the finance team and department heads to ensure approved budget is maintained, properly appropriated, and the use of funds maximized and used efficiently. I'm just going to kind of read through these, so just stop me if you guys want to talk about any of them. The second one, seek alternative funding wherever possible through grants, endowments, or gifts to enhance department funding and services. C, maintain fiscal discipline in all departments, annually finding new savings in every department. D, update the Board of Selectmen on anticipated appropriations and all changes. E, strategic planning to ensure all CIP items and building maintenance are addressed as needed. And then F, work with the Advisory Committee Town Accountant and Town Treasurer when preparing budgets, expenditures, and anticipated financial obligations to be presented accurately at the annual town meeting in an effort to increase fiscal transparency.
So just one correction on F. It's the way that the structure is now, it's work with the Advisory Committee Finance Director.
Okay.
Okay. The Town Accountant and Town Treasurer both work for the Finance Director.
Okay.
So they, he would assign things to them, obviously.
So I'm making the real-time edits as we go along, so that hopefully at the end we have everything captured. All right, now moving into-
So before, if you don't mind, before we leave this section. So my thought on a couple of these are, and it's because I don't have the expertise in setting goals and Human Resources that I'm sure a few of you do, seeing as I'm a one-man show, is, is some of these more job description than goals per se? You know, is a couple of these, so my first one, you know, A, you know, continue working with finance team, department heads to ensure the approved budget is maintained. Is that a goal? And feedback's important.
Yeah.
Or is that a job description?
I would say in a time like this, with the uncertainty due to COVID-19, that is a goal.
Okay.
I would say that is probably one of Bill's top goals for 2021, is to maintain that fiscal-
Discipline.
Discipline that we need to have right now. So, you know, again, well, look, these aren't goals that will be every year. This may change for next year, but I think for this year-
So I agree with Leah on all those points. I think what, what I, if you, the goal really, to protect and enhance the financial health of the town, more overarching principles, you know, that you're trying to get to. The objectives sort of break that down by measurable pieces of what, how you're going to achieve that goal.
Okay. So if you do everything under here, if you do A through F, you met that goal.
You're doing that goal, which is the goal number one.
Yeah, protect and enhance the financial health of the town.
So this is sort of a template that people in Human Resources that you've used before that-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, different, different things for what I do, but you want things that are actionable and measurable.
Okay.
So, you know, kind of going to your goal, Doc, one of your goals, or was it one of Stephanie's? With these financial changes, work with department heads to come up with a way to cut budgets if needed. I felt like that correlated to Goal 1C. So I kind of matched up the ones that came from you and Stephanie and others, where I thought that they, you know, matched up with one of the other goals.
Okay.
So instead, yeah, instead of, so, I mean, cutting budgets is one thing, finding savings is a different, different way of looking at it. Because I think the reality is that we don't want to just cut precipitously. We want to look at ways that we can still maintain the operation, but look at ways we can do them more efficiently. And that results in savings. Okay? So I, so I think that's probably the better way to look at it.
Yeah, and we have savings and they're not cut.
Right.
So when Bill and I met for his, when we sat down to review, you know, last year's review, that was one thing I said, is maybe you can challenge every department to come up with, you know, three ways where can you save money? And, you know, what's three ways you can serve the customer better, whether it's a citizen or another department or whatever, improve your operations? So those are measurable, tangible things that you can do.
Suggestion on this for tonight, should we go through, like, we just read through all of the objectives for Goal Number One. Should we decide as a board, we're good, everything, you know, like have discussions specifically on that subject? Or are we going to read through everything and then?
I would, I think we should read through everything and then come back and just stamp it, because there are a couple that I don't have a home for, so they could end up in some of these as we go through.
I agree.
Okay.
I'd rather see the whole thing read, too.
Okay.
So we'll kind of go through each.
Because we might change depending on what's on the back page, page four.
Or there might be something we get into Goal Two that we're like, hey, that really belongs up in Goal One, let's move it up there, so.
And it looks like most of my suggested goals, Doc, there are, there are very little ones that you weren't able to tie in.
Right, just two.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, I mean, we all are thinking similar, but Leah, you nailed it, how you, how you presented it. So, yeah, I think, when you get to that, will you still like read mine or read Doc's? Or do we think we've already covered it?
I think that'll be up to you guys. So want to move on to protect and enhance communication and engagement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's Goal Two. Goal Two, A, maintain an open, transparent atmosphere with all elected and appointed boards, and ensure that all Board of Selectmen members are informed of all important matters impacting the town. Increase cross-board collaboration meetings whenever necessary.
So what would, so explain that a little bit.
And that actually also crossed over with Stephanie's, better communication between Town Administration's Board and the public. So, I mean, I think that it's, I think that right now, we're a little siloed sometimes. And I think that it's just making sure that all boards that need to know about something or where it crosses, that, that we do that and communicate. You know, we've done a lot of it this year, between School Committee and Us and AdCom is a good example that I can think of. We did a lot last year with the Nippon set, the group that you worked in. Yeah, so it's really where that, where that is required, helping us facilitate those crossovers and making sure we bring the right people together.
And some of that did, like you said, did happen this year. Obviously, last year, when I was on AdCom, there were some differences with the view of AdCom, with the Board of Selectmen, maybe, maybe with Bill. And I think Bill getting some meetings together with everybody, definitely, we, so we're not, there's not an Advisory Committee meeting, and they're talking, and nobody here knows where they're coming up with some of their goals for the budget or warrant articles, and then we're meeting. And so I think, I think that's, just, just so that's where I, where I came up with, that is one of the goals as well. And I think we've already headed in the right direction by having some mutual meetings.
So you're, so the goal for the Board is to continue on that path. So, so some of this, there's a crossover between goals for me as well as goals for you. So I think we're going to have to work together to achieve these, because it's not just about what I do, it's about what we do collectively. And the more effectively we do that, the better it's going to be for all, for the town. So I think, so I think with one, I think that's something we just have to sort of like identify some, some of the specific steps that we'd like to get to. So think about that a little bit more. You don't have to answer it tonight, but think about some of the things that concern you the most that, and you can just send me, you know, something, some information about it, like what you think concerns you. And then I'll look at that as a way to try and address those things throughout the course of the year. All right? And because I think it, communications is a tricky one, because it means different things to different people. And I don't want to get caught in the, in the wickets of a situation where it means something different to you versus someone to something else, someone else. And I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the expectation is. Do you follow me?
Yeah, I mean, I think that having an open and transparent atmosphere between all boards and working together. I mean, I don't think that that one's-
That, that part's, that part's clear. I, but, but if you, if you look at maintain open, transparent atmosphere, I mean, that could mean, there's different ways to get there.
Right.
All right? So I don't want to make sure that we're all achieving, trying to achieve that same level of, of understanding. So sometimes it's, it's difficult to do that in every situation, given the sensitive nature of the information that you have.
Right.
So we have to be really careful.
Right. Which, which you just, that last sentence you just said, depending on the sensitive information-
That you have.
That we have, different ways of putting it out or not putting it out-
Exactly.
Because of that is, gets a little sticky sometimes.
I don't think it means everything. I think, like I said, the budget process is a perfect example-
Yeah.
Of where we've increased, you know, collaboration-
Yeah, absolutely.
And meetings like that.
We've already had conversations about how we can do that even more over the course of the next year. So, so we're well on our way to try and address that.
All right. B is improve the responsiveness of town government by initiating a flow of information to inform residents of changes in bylaws and policies. Increase accessibility to, to, to all information using all available media. So I think that's just, you know, in the fluid world that we're in, like the daily updates that you were doing, you know, the water ban, you know, you can just think of a couple of different things that you never know what's going to come at you, but making sure that we have a plan to communicate with residents and businesses as things happen. Like, you know, if I think of the temporary dining, for example, you know, having a plan to communicate that. And I think that that comes into play a lot, maybe with, you know, the new website was built and rolled out so that we could have people subscribe, and we could, you know, get email lists going and everything. So it was created, we spent a lot of hours creating the new website, but I feel like we're not using, we're not using the full functionality. Some departments are using it better than others, which kind of rolls into the next one here. C, with the role of the new town website, develop a communication strategy plan to promote awareness of residents regarding changes to policies, initiatives, actions of town government, makes that, make access more accessible and available using the website and other media platforms. Hold departments accountable for consistent, timely, and accurate information. So like, that's one, Chris, that maybe those two could be collapsed together. And I think I'd go with C almost, more than B.
Yeah, B, C, B, C, and E are all basically the same. There's differences-
Right.
Like a different last sentence in each, but it's all, all of them say, you know, increase accessibility to available media, you know, so, and then the next one's media platforms, social media, local, so it's, we need to consolidate. And that's the one, too, the one goal, that list of objectives is a mile long.
Right.
So I think if, there's a lot of redundancy there.
So I think I would go with C.
I was just going to say, C's the best of all three of them, yeah.
Yeah, so let me just delete B and the E.
And the only thing you might want to add to C that, that the others don't have is that last line in E, create and innovate venues to open communication and preparedness for town meeting.
Okay.
I think every year, we do a better job getting the information out about town meeting. I think we're always learning better ways to get it out there. And even during the whole COVID thing, situation, pandemic, we still had over 200 people at town meeting.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think there was an importance there that people show up, and I think people did.
Yeah, people, because people were home, they were spending more time looking at social media and, and, you know, the internet and looking maybe at the website, because they weren't, it was much more required a time. People weren't so busy running around, doing everything that you're always doing. I will tell you, a good example is, I don't know if it was on the Foxborough discussion or whatnot, there was a lot of chatter about the water ban.
Yeah.
And some correct information out there, some not correct information, and then, but I could see people, I, I tried to, you know, I'm not going to make any comments there. I, I might read it, but I'm not going to comment on anything there. But I did see some people correcting, you know, someone said, we just got our, it was funny, shortly afterwards, everybody got their, the flyer from the water department, and there were people, wait a minute, I just saw it, and, and what do you mean? I'm, I'm doing this. And then some people were explaining, they either were watching the meeting, or they had heard through the grapevine, unfortunately had gone out to press before we went into the ban. So people are, do pay attention in their, you know, I think at the end of the day, the correct information got there. It was a lot of mistruths and back and forth, and, but I-
As far as the town meeting, too, I think having AdCom televised this year was-
Huge.
It really was.
Huge, yeah. I completely agree, even for myself. Like, I know sometimes there was times that I couldn't get there, but I watched it on TV, or I recorded it and went and watched it. So I think that was huge.
Can I make a comment on, on C? Because we're getting ready to open Town Hall next Monday, and this is one where we've been bringing together a lot of information and preparation to prepare to bring the public back into the building they own and use for their business. I think that's an example of, when you talk about actions of town government, making information more accessible, and also using other media platforms, that's one, I think, that maybe will be an example, but also an area where some feedback would be good. Because this is, this is the first action of the new year. If this is one of the ones that's adopted, and I think it would be valuable to Bill, and I know it would be to myself and our community information specialist, how did we do? You go in from three months of, of, you know, having the residents do the business online and by mail, to all of a sudden, we're opening the doors. That's a huge communication jump from one world to another. I think the feedback would be good.
And ideally, with the new website, like using Stephanie's example with the water ban, if we use the town's website in the way that it was created and intended to be used with being able to subscribe and have stuff pushed out, you know, let's say, over the course of the next year, we really push that. People can subscribe to water stuff, and they can send out an email with the water ban info. Right now, you know, the DPW's got their own page, and they're posting stuff, and then you guys are sometimes sharing it, and then sometimes it goes up, and sometimes it doesn't go up. You know, there's definitely, I would call it kind of haphazard communication right now. It's not always the same, it's not, you know, there's different methods. So I think if we get everyone in the habit of using that site and subscribing to the things they think are important, like maybe, Doc, you care about Planning Board, and Chris, you care about Board of Health, and someone else cares about the water department, you can kind of pick and choose what information is delivered right to you as far as, you know, important notices like that, agendas, meeting minutes. So if we have a campaign to push people to subscribe to that stuff, and then we commit to, you know, feeding people information that they're subscribing to, everyone's going to get in the habit, and we're going to have good lists, so that when something like this happens, we have a list. Right now, we don't really have a way of doing that besides a mailing, you know, or a reverse 911.
Well, we, different groups have different lists, and, and we don't have really a central Town Hall list-
Right.
Or a Town, Town list. You know, so the schools have a list, recreation has a list, library has a list, you know, and we sometimes borrow that information to try and get information out.
Right.
So we need to just try and get into the habit of, you know, subscribe, sign up here for your, for your regular updates on what's going on.
Right. It was really eye-opening with the, with the dining regulations. We tried to get a list of the restaurants, and, you know, obviously, we don't know when a business comes and goes, but like, there was stuff that was missing and stuff that was wrong and stuff, like, it was just, we couldn't, I actually, like, me and another resident actually ended up going out, you know, with Paige's help, getting a list, and then, like, going through in our heads through streets, and, you know, no one thought of Foxborough Country Club, because it's not necessarily a restaurant, and, you know, things like that.
People do what they're ready to eat.
Yeah, things like that, that it was kind of eye-opening, that those lists just simply did not exist.
And that's a simple fix when they apply each year for their permit, just add a line with email address.
One of the things we have-
Build it into our system.
Right.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you off, but there was, one of the, the things that we have done is actually Katie, who has taken over that role, has sort of created, established a law, and it's a well-established list to update all those things now, so we can actually take and transfer that list right over into, into that information, into our communication strategy. So the one thing that we've embarked upon in, on our own volition is to, is sort of create a human communication strategy across town, and all town operations. So which will, will take, will utilize the services of Aaron, who's the IT Director, as well as some of the key people in the various departments, so that they, we can talk to them about how we, how we share information, how we put it out, so we don't get into the, into habit of just siloing, as you point out, information to certain people and that, and not others. One of the things that, you know, we, Fire Police have done, you know, Facebook pages, and they do a pretty good job of getting that information out quite a bit. So one of the things that we're looking at is like, why do we need to have multiple Facebook pages? You know, and I, and I, we've already had other departments reach out to us, well, we want to do our own. I said, whoa, before we start doing any more Facebook pages, let's identify the reasons why we need to have multiple ones. Because right now, as I see it, I don't know that we need to do that. I think if you had one powerful Facebook page that showed all the elements of what we do and how we get that information out to people, people would actually not only see what's going on in police and fire, but across the entire spectrum of services that we provide.
And for security, I mean, we don't know who, you don't know who's running those pages necessarily.
Exactly.
I think there's a whole list of things that can come from tightening it up. And even, you know, communications to boards and committees, like we saw with the appointments, we, it took us like three months to come up with a list of who's on what board all around this town, because there's another database that's maintained outside, that, like, you know, as you kind of peel away the layers of the onion, I think it'll be a lot of work this year to get it done. But once we get it done, it'll be a whole smoother operation, you know, getting information out, getting information in, kind of both ways.
So, go ahead. Can we collate all the Facebook pages into one page with subcategories under?
That's going to be part of our discussions to determine that, because we need to find out what's the best way to do that. You know, Christina's been already, you know, looking at some of those, those issues right now, trying to come up with ideas of how we can sort of consolidate that information so it makes better sense. And then, you know, again, having a centralized communications policy will help clarify those things and how that's going to be done. So we don't know, don't know all the answers yet and how that's going to be done, but we certainly at least have some thoughts about how it's causing some challenges for us. And so what you're, what you're all talking about tonight is that we're evolving as an organization now, become more of an information central organization as opposed to the way things used to be, where we used to transact business through the newspapers, more or less. But now, it's more or less, we have to control the information so we can get it out to people because it's not coming out all the time through, through the sources of, the traditional media sources. So I think that's, that's really how it's, it's time to evolve now.
Just while we were talking about communication and mentioning the water ban, I think it might have been Doc's suggestion, do we, did we look into, or possibly Chris Gallagher look into doing the reverse 911 to get the information out?
Rained ever since, so we're good.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what happened. So we didn't need to, we didn't need to do that, given the circumstances.
Right, you're right, you're right, Doc. Yeah, I, I mean, I just-
We ended up getting like three days of straight rain, so we're, and we're still getting it. So, so I think that the need for that was, was not as significant at the time. But, but we really don't have a, we have a system, right? For nine, reverse 911, but it's actually a school department, right?
The schools does. I believe that Aaron and Chris worked together to do a reverse 911 call with all the school age parents, those contacts. And then he may or may not have, he was going to speak to Mark Craig, I'm not entirely sure about, about that right now, but do the senior list that he has, to their 600 most active users can, they'd be able to get the word out. So we put it on the website, we sent out Facebook messages, so I think people are aware of it right now. And I think that just, even though it rained, I don't want to misspeak, but I think that we still need to, you know, abide by the water ban.
But I think the theme is there, that every department's got their own thing going on. It's not even always the same way, like Rex using Constant Contact, other departments have like a list that may be an Excel spreadsheet. We just, we need to work together to come up with a plan.
Well, there needs to be a central plan.
Yeah, exactly. Not, not an individual department plan.
Right, yeah. A central plan that, that sort of, and, and the coordination pieces and all that has to be, has to be done, no question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I wanted to capture what Stephanie, I think, where I think you were going on that was the, you know, the reverse 911. And that is something where the school does have something, police have something, and neither the police chief nor the superintendent want to saturate what is a really valuable communication tool for them by putting out a lot of other stuff. However, I think we do have a need for, I think where you were going with that is when we have a, okay, it's not an emergency, but it's not routine either. We have some urgent information that has to go out, and that's something, you know, ongoing conversation with, with our Director of Technologies, Aaron, where we do need to explore that, whether it's a NEXL system or whatever it is, so that we can put out that, that water main break that-
Yeah.
You know, you know, 10% or 20% of town may be coming across it.
Yeah.
I think that's an important areas that we-
Well, and I don't want to speak for Doc, but I'm assuming, as soon as you heard Chris say the word, you know, we, it may become an issue for, for the fire department, then that becomes, it's, it's not just, okay, well, we're using a little too much water. This could be, it's a serious, could be a very serious issue.
Yeah, you don't want to turn it into a cry wolf syndrome.
No, that's exactly what I was thinking.
A cry wolf syndrome, where everybody's crying wolf all the time.
Yeah.
And then people don't pay attention to it.
Yeah.
So that becomes an issue. So, so what I'm listening to here was great, because it's really helpful for me to understand what the, the goal is. But the reality is that we're probably going to be, during the course of the next year, we're going to be able to develop a framework for this. I'm not sure we'll get all the pieces finalized as part of that, but we'll certainly develop a framework for how we want to try and communicate as a goal, as a, as a tool going forward as an organization. as an organization, what, how are we gonna, how do we wanna get information out? And let's agree on that, because that part is really important. Because, and then you can really break it down to the, to the, to the finite pieces of how we do that as we go through the year. And we will get some of that done, there's no question about that. But I, I don't know if we'll get the full spectrum, because it's gonna take some time to get you, for people to get used to that way of changing the way we develop the messages.
Just out of curiosity, does anyone know, maybe Christina knows, with all our social media platforms, what percentage of society does that reach?
Uh, I believe that police have about 10,000 followers on Facebook, Fire has around 8,000. I believe that other pages are a little bit less, and I think that the town, Foxborough Town Page, which encompasses Town Hall, is around 2,000 or 3,000 followers.
That's a pretty good group.
And that's just Facebook? What about, like, Twitter and?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't done the-
The school uses Twitter heavily.
Research on that yet.
Do we use Twitter, the town?
We do have a Twitter account, and we, when, um, everything that I push out, um, I use a, a social media program that pushes it out to all three accounts all at once, so Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter are posted on, and if it's a press release, it'll go on that, but it'll, and link back to the press release on the website or information, it'll, um, it's linked back to the website, and there's, uh, information and, um, icons there, so you can readily, you know, readily identify it, that that's the information. So the water ban has similar photos on the press release that it does when we put it out there for.
I mean, 2,000, that's very low.
Yes.
If we're trying to, you know, push everything out on social media, push everything out on social media. Are we, you know, we need to figure out a way to build the social media and then be pushing it out.
Well, but collectively, though.
Yeah.
Collectively, when you get 10,000, 8,000, 2,000, 3,000, it starts building that.
As long as it's a consistent message, I mean, if, if the message is getting generated here, and, and you get it to police, Fire, you know, Council on Aging, or whatever, and it's the same message going out.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got to establish the rules of the game, and, and you know, that's, that's always a challenge, because some, sometimes things happen rather quickly, and you have to get stuff out quickly, and, and, and the rules change in, in the process. But I think generally, the, the, what we're trying to do is come up with a, a consistent approach, assistant messaging, and who's gonna control the message? Because, you know, if you don't control the message, virtually anything gets out, and you, and you wanna make sure it's accurate.
It's like we need a marketing director for the town.
Yeah, and you, you need to get people in the habit of where to go for information. Like I said, right now, we don't necessarily always and consistently communicate, so.
A, a part of that multiple-pronged approach, would it not be then some sort of media campaign to like the Town of Foxborough on Facebook?
Yeah.
To get cutting-edge-
Get all your latest information.
Subscribe to the town website, pick and choose what you wanna hear, it'll be sent right to your inbox, but then we have to commit to serving people that information.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right, it's, it's a multiple level.
Can you look at, like, 'cause I don't know, i- I mean, is it Christina's job, is it Aaron's job, like, is there a plan? I, I was going with, can we look to see if there's a, a five or $10,000 grant to get like a, a media company, or, or somebody to kind of help establish something?
Well, to, to develop the strategy.
Yeah.
Yeah, even our Facebook page, like if I search, which I'm pretty Facebook savvy, if I search Foxborough, Mass, it doesn't come up. I actually have to go to Foxborough Council on Aging, find one of the videos that Mark has shared of you doing a live, and then click on the page. Like somehow, when the page was set up, like if you click on Foxborough, UGH, Mass, and then search, it doesn't come up as like a page. So I don't know if we have to change it to Town of Foxborough, or maybe have someone look at how it's set up. It'll show up in my feed, but you can go in, and you can pick what's shown to you, so you can like, it's called Show First, like, I can pick to make Foxborough more important than, I don't know, Shaw's, or whatever other page I follow, you know, and it will show you those first, and it will, it will put it in your newsfeed, kind of where it belongs.
Should be Homes for Outroops.
Right. I have that one bookmarked, too, of course.
I've noticed that, uh, that many, if not most, towns have the same issue, and if, if you search by the town name, it's gonna come up, you know, maybe six or so down.
Yeah.
Whereas if you search Town of, fill in the blank, Foxborough,
Right.
it's gonna come up.
Right.
Um, at the top.
Like, Easton does a good, a good job, I, I follow a lot of towns, just 'cause I'm a dork like that. Um, and, you know, theirs is Town of, so I don't know if ours needs to be changed to Town of Foxborough, we need to look at how it's set up. And maybe there's a post on how to, you know, have it be Follow First, or something, but I think that, you know, overall, we can kind of more consistently serve up information. Like I mentioned, Town, the day of Town Meeting, we did not make a post that it was Town Meeting. I know that we ended up with a lot of people there, but, you know, that's the kind of, if, if we have, you know, a plan, then, then, you know, we're able to stick to the plan.
Yeah, and on that, too, it's like, we should almost start doing like surveys as people come in, like, hey, you know, how did you hear about Town Meeting? Because that was the, the most attended Town Meeting in the last few years.
And ironically, you know, I'm curious, like, how they know about it, you know?
Right.
So it might be the Council on Aging and, you know, other pages sharing it, I don't know.
Well, I know companies, like whoever has the platform for our website, I mean, we just went through a whole thing at work where the company that hosts our website, we're doing another project, and we got an RFP from them, and it was absurd, so we went three other smaller companies, and, and one was extremely reasonable to do what we needed to do, so. There's definitely other ways to help build whatever we want, and there could be, I mean, we have great luck in this town with grants and stuff, so.
In your, um, in your middle sentence in C, um, I was glad to see this, and I think it's important, at the end of that, it says, uh, other media platforms, because we have four generations, uh, basically, in our workforce, not just in the town, but in general. And we also have four generations that are interested in municipal government in Foxborough. When you think about that, um, those first two, even the first three generations that are doing all the things that we're talking about, social media, website, doing all that stuff, we can't forget that other generation, because cable access, a lot of people are getting most of their information on town government there. Um, also, the newspaper, while it's, while it's going down, that's an important source for some people, so I'm glad to see the, and other platforms, 'cause it really is-
Yeah, like, I don't think we, we printed the warrant in the newspaper this year for the first time. I subscribed to the reporter, I, I didn't see it.
It wasn't?
But again, that goes back to the plan, that we need to have this plan, and I, I get what you say, that it might not happen this year, but I feel strongly that we've been talking about this since Amanda was still here. This one is really critical and important for this year.
So, so the, the warrant can be posted in the, um, on the, on the website?
No, I know it can be, I know it can be, but like Mike said,
Yeah.
other platforms, you know, I, I, you know, certain people, if you think of your grandparents, they probably aren't going out to self-service off the website and look for the warrant, you know? They're used to it every year, it's printed in the, in the Fox Report, and, you know, expect to see it there.
It would be interesting, is that us dropping the ball, or is that the Sun Chronicle saving paper and not putting it in? That would be an interesting-
It's, it's a question, well, quite honestly, I think the, the issue is, is that when we officially made the, the news, the, the website, the, the notification area, that it's, that's the option that we can use. And so we've gotten away a little bit from using a newspaper for those reasons. So, I mean, but if that's what people want us to do, we can do that.
Yeah, we just, we never talked about it, you know?
Right, we never talked about it.
But it wa, but it was clearly identified as an option that we could do, and, and it's been done, so. But if people don't want us to do that, we don't have to do that, we can do something.
But I'd be curious to see, in the past, who put it in the paper? Was it us, was it the town?
Well, it's, it's, it's the selectman's warrant, so it's, it's, so it goes, it's by you, it's your warrant.
Yeah, so we-
No, 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 but who actually puts it in the paper?
Well, it would be our office.
Bob Kotler put it in?
No, no, Bob Kotler doesn't do it, no.
It's you.
It would be our office.
And it's probably a huge expense, too.
Yeah, it is, yeah, depending how long the warrant is, it's expensive.
And you know something?
So that, that's-
I don't think it was in last year's.
No, no, it wasn't.
No, I, I mean, not this, this past year, but if I recall-
I don't remember the year before.
Because, um-
I don't think it's been in the past few years.
Now, we, I can remember we voted to have it on the website, I think, a couple of years ago.
Right.
The, the other thing that has been, um, in the paper, which is shorter, is the AdCom recommendations.
Yeah.
And, and I-
Yeah, those have to be in the paper.
We did get some ques-
No, I don't think, they don't-
I don't think they were.
They, they put them in the, in the, in the, um-
Online.
Yeah, online, no, the, uh, what's the, what's the, the patch?
Yeah, yeah.
But we did have some questions this year about why it wasn't in the paper. I think it's gonna be important for, you know, to get the AdCom recommendations in the paper.
Yeah.
People expect to see that, you know, I think we would wanna do that.
I think, I may be thinking about special town meeting. I, I know the la, well, obviously, they weren't this year, but I wanna say they maybe weren't in the paper, the AdCom recommendations, last year either. Definitely in the fall, possibly a whole year ago, but they were in the patch, but, yeah, I mean, it, it all depends. I mean, my parents are in the REITs, they don't have, own a computer, they don't have iPhones. Um, someone like that would be looking to, to read them in the paper. Most of the people can get them on the patch, but you, like, you're right, that last generation-
We don't, we can't forget part of our-
Yeah, and even Patch, like, we didn't serve that up to the Patch. Patch just, I think, watched it on a recording for Cable Access and wrote their own article.
No, actually, Seth sent it to Patch.
Oh, he did, okay, okay.
You had, you, we, each, each, um, member is, you, you were assigned an article to, to, to do, to do the write-up, and it's not, you know, it, it doesn't say my name next to it, but it was supposed to say what the vote was, and what the recommendation is, and a little brief.
Okay.
You know, synopsis of what's there.
Can we just go back to, um, so I've, I, I think you've probably done the same thing, Leah, but I went, now it's, it's A, B, C, um, D, E, F, G, H now, 'cause we took out two of them, right?
Yeah, let me continue after that one. So the next one would be C, create a plan for department heads to meet with the Board of Selectmen no less than annually to discuss issues and anticipated updates to their department. I don't feel strongly about this one, this is one, do we wanna hear from departments? Like, maybe once a month, the department comes in and just gives us what's coming down the pike strategically, three to five years, do we wanna leave that to Bill?
You could, you could rotate it, you could, I mean, it's not a bad thing to have people come in and just give a report.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, it's not a bad thing, so, I mean, but I, um, but I'd rotate it so that it'd be a different department every-
Right, we wouldn't go through everyone at once.
You wouldn't need to go through everybody's stuff, but clearly.
But like, in the course of a year, maybe you hear from DPW, Police, Fire.
Yeah, the key ones, Finance, you know, Finance, you know, the key-
When I first read it, my first thought was, no, you know, that would be a cross-out, because it seems like that, we get that from Bill, but it would be interesting, now that we've discussed it out loud.
Well, it, the, the thing that would be good is, if, you know, Chris was in here, everybody always has questions.
Yeah.
You know, not specifically to anything, but like, hey, when are you gonna do West Street Dam, you know? So it would be a good open dialogue, 'cause I know, um, over the last five or six years, I'd call Bill, you know, hey, what's Roger doing about this? Why isn't this like this? So it wouldn't be bad. Um, the one word that threw me for a loop was anticipated updates. Well, are they updates, or are they, you know, did you just mean, like, what do they see coming down?
Yeah, it could be like strategic plans, instead of discussing issues and strategic plans for their departments?
Or anticipated actions involving their departments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, you know, Bill has a couple of years, this is where we should really be thinking three, five years ahead at this time, now, you know, to kind of know what's happening, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So if I edit that one, create a plan for department heads to meet with the Board of Selectmen no less than annually to discuss issues and-
Anticipated actions involving their departments.
Okay.
I would try to get, like, strategic plans in there, too, like-
Anticipated strategic actions involving their departments?
Yes, it's, uh, it's, involve, anticipate strategic actions involving their departments, yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, the next one comes up as D, with what I had removed, increase communication between town government and school administration for open and transparent engagement and succession planning. So my thought behind this is this works like a well-oiled machine right now. But the reality of it is, is that Bill, and Bill, probably, I have, I have no idea, but, you know, Bill Eukenis, you know, I don't know how many years he has left, but it works right, well right now, but what if we have a new town manager and a new business manager? I feel like we could do a better job, um, kind of cross collaborating there to prepare for the next three to five years if there is change. Because usually, a town manager would probably have a little bit more hands-on with the school side than we do, just because Bill Eukenis does such a good job, that we don't really have to do anything over there, you know, his, his ship runs pretty well.
So I'm, I'm looking at D, and I go back to A, because you're, you're saying the same thing to a degree, maintain open, transparent atmosphere with all elected and appointed boards, ensure members are informed of all important matters impacting the town. Clearly, this would impact the town, right? So I think if you look at, at that, I think the approach there, I think what you're trying to get to, Leah, and it's, it's, it's a very valid point, is to say, uh, develop a succession plan.
Okay.
Um, that, is that, we can get away from the communication, because communication actually exists now, there's no, there's no issue over that.
Instead of increase, how about continue?
Continue, yeah, and, um, or develop a, a succession plan by, by, uh, communicating with all town departments to determine, um, how the town wants to manage, to be managed as, as we go forward.
So I don't know that it's all-town departments, I'm focusing more on the school side on this, because of, because of, you know, let's say, let's say tomorrow, you and Bill Eukenis both decide to retire and move off to Florida. That's not gonna look, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a major gap.
But, but the question is, do we, everyone in this room, have any input into hiring a new school finance director?
No.
No.
No, it's school committees.
Right, but this is, this is Bill working with that person, to make sure that each, each hand knows what they're doing.
I, I'm, I wanna just push back a little bit on that, because I think when they, well, at least when, I know when I was hired, it was a school person, Bill Eukenis was on the, on the selection panel. So I, I do believe, and Bill Eukenis was already here, so I don't know how it was done prior to, to him being there, but I would think you'd want somebody from the town, from the selectmen on that group to, as, you know, as another person from town government, participating in that discussion, because obviously, the relationship between the town and the school is very, very important. And, and the two, and the, and clearly Superintendent and the manager talk a lot, but so does the, the finance director and the, and the, and the, and the, uh, school business manager. So you wanna maintain that relationship. So I think what you, you're trying to do, and where you're trying to get is to develop a succession plan that involves, that, that is, um, is, is reflective of the relationship between the town and school, and town and school, uh, school operations.
Yeah, I, I feel like they're very siloed right now, and that works, they almost work like two independent companies, let's say. But that works well, that's how it works in Foxborough, it doesn't work like that everywhere. Who knows what the next person's gonna look like? So this is thinking more strategically, again, three, five years, it's not changing the way we do anything today, but it's, you know, if someone who's key like that ever left, and I know that the school committee hires a superintendent, but I don't know that that's necessarily true for the business manager.
I believe it is.
Yeah, the superintendent is, is hired, I mean, is hired by, by the, by the committee. I also think that the superintendent hires the business manager. And then, but I do think that the school committee has some involvement in that, I'm not sure to what degree, though.
But if, if they ever left and that position was empty, they'd be looking to finance, I think, and, and your role.
Right.
For that support, not the superintendent, um, necessarily.
Well, and, and you know something, you, you, you've hit the nail on the head there. I mean, I, I have no idea what Bill Eukenis's intentions are, but this past January, I only know it because it was right after Jimmy had his transplant. Bill came in, I believe in January, it was eight years for him, so I would assume most municipality employees are looking to at least put in that 10-year, that's where you would qualify to draw a pension. Um, like I said, I, I have no idea what Bill's plan is, but I would, you know, if he, if his plan is to kind of hit that point, and based on his age, and, and that's where, you know, what his thought process is, he and Bill could realistically, you know, I know Bill's got a contract for three more years, and, and I'm not sure what your plans are either, but realistically, you guys could leave on very similar terms.
That's exactly what my concern-
It may not match up exactly, but, but conceivably, yeah, they could be within a year of each other.
Yeah, and, and in mo, and in a lot of towns, again, it doesn't operate like Foxborough operates. Like, right now, what they are tasked with, with trying to make this a one-to-one district alone, I would think is going to, you know, for this year, there's gonna have to be more involvement probably on this side, that's probably not gonna be, you know, their, their silo, they've got a huge task to roll out, um, between now and September, so, um.
So I would think, on this one, we're increased communication, so I would say, um, work with the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee to help develop a succession plan for the next uh, town, the next town manager. Right?
No, school business manager.
Well, yeah, but we have no bearing or jurisdiction.
No, I understand that.
But I think, but I think that's something that they would probably put in their goals, and you would put, you would put-
Yeah, I'm thinking more, we're holding your feet to the fire, to make sure that that's bridged.
Right.
Than us talking about school committee, like, I wouldn't wanna get into that detail.
But we would want, we would want their input into the process, no question about it.
That might be one of our goals, but I think your goal is to bridge that gap in succession planning.
So I apologize, so you're talking about succession planning for him?
Right.
And Bill, and both.
So you're sort of talking both?
Both, yeah, I think it's both.
But, but you, you don't have control over that process, so the Board of Selectmen, you can, you can set that as a goal for me, the School Committee would have to set that goal for Bill.
But you have control over communication between them and you, and that's what I'm saying. So continue communication between town side and school business administration So, continue communication between town side and school business administration for open and transparent engagement and succession planning, and that's the two of them doing it together.
Okay.
Not us, not the school committee. Those two guys kind of working to make sure that, you know, each side of the silo, that there's a bridge between them.
No, I think, I think that's fair.
Yeah. And you know something? Even though Bill Eukenis was on the committee when they hired you, that doesn't necessarily mean he would be on the next one if by chance, if Bill left before him, or it doesn't mean that who comes in after him, I mean, I'm guessing there's a reason why, I don't know if it was just because of his position or his knowledge.
Well, I think his knowledge of town government, because he served on the AdCom at one time too. So, he's, he had a lot of knowledge, but the other side of that is that I can tell you that from my own experience, in two other communities, I actually served on selection processes for the school business manager, as the town manager, because they wanted my input into that process.
Yep.
Because the relationship was important.
Yeah.
The same things you talked about.
And like I said, in other communities, the town manager does have much more of an overarching than a dotted line.
Mm-hmm, right.
I would make a suggestion to take that objective and move it down under goal four.
Okay.
Right under, you know, it could be B. So, jumping ahead just to read it through, you know, develop a formal succession plan for town manager and other key roles, and then...
You take that and incorporate that.
That would be B. Increase communication between town government and school administration for an open, transparent engagement and succession planning.
I like that. I just slid that down.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, perfect, Chris.
I can go home? You made a good...
You're done.
Done.
Giving that high note, right?
Chris dropped them.
So, I'm going to have to just renumber these after, but for now, the next one would be D, which is my E now. Communicate and visit local business owners, community clubs, organizations, and schools to ensure the town's commitment to all residents. And that kind of goes in with, which, where is it? With A, yeah, yeah. I think that those could probably be collapsed too.
So, one of the things, like, I made a note, like, the way this is written, are we assuming that he doesn't do this already?
No.
Okay.
But it's important that he does it, so...
Yeah, okay, all right.
Because I already do think you have a great relationship with Route One and everything, Forbes Boulevard, maybe we focus, you know, maybe you look at Uptown, you know, Paige is doing a lot of that now. It doesn't mean that it's not happening, but it's just something that's important to happen. So, if I cut that one, are we okay if I just add community clubs and organizations too? To 3A?
Yes.
Well, can you do us a favor? Can we use the regular, the hard copy we have right now, like, the lettering? Because you have the changes, we don't, so it's...
But I have to make it so, as I'm making it, it's going to change, so...
We'll realize that.
Yeah, okay. I have it printed out here too. Okay, so I'm...
Is that, just, I'm just a little confused. So, is it two, goal two now, 2D, that says communicate and visit local business owners? Because you moved the other ones down.
I have to renumber them after.
Yeah, what I'm going to worry about the...
Yeah, I'm capturing it here and I can circulate it around for us to all look at it before we sign it too. So, let me just skip...
Is there a reason that you differentiate clubs and organizations there?
No, that's why I just communicate, I just put that together.
Community organizations?
Yeah, yeah. All right. So then, it would go down to what? Increase dialogue, it starts with. That's H on your printed out one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Increase dialogue with business owners and committees in an effort to have a more responsive and business-friendly community, especially in the Uptown area. I think that's an important one. I think, like, there's certain things that you're accountable for, certain things that you're responsible for, certain things that you influence. This would be one that you would hopefully help influence. So, you know, Paige would probably have the main ownership, but you would make a conscious effort this year to, you know, maybe stop in or communicate with some of those businesses to see what their challenges are. And that kind of tied in with, I think, your master plan one. All right, the next one, establish a clear and concise line of communication between town's manager's office and various boards. Assist boards with consistent communication plan by assigning a town department to be a liaison for each. So, Bill and I have spoken quite a bit about these ones. So, there's boards that are obvious, right? You've got like the Council on Aging, you know, board, that aligns to the Council on Aging. The Economic Development Committee aligns to Paige. Certain conservation ones align to them. But then there's other ones that are kind of just out there, like the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness. We'd probably align that to the town manager's office. Christina and I actually went through and picked a department that would be a liaison to each of those, and the reason they would be a liaison is they would help them, like, you know, think about the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. They need someone to help them put their minutes up and post their meetings and do all that for them and have them communicated out by the website. So, that department would be there to either help them communicate or answer questions. Just let them know and feel them, help them feel more supported that they have someone to go to.
So, going through all those committees like you two did over the last few months, are there a bunch of committees that are sort of orphans?
I'd say maybe three to five.
I'd have to look.
Yeah, but even like Planning Board, right now, I think that we can have, we can hold them accountable to make sure that their meeting minutes are posted, the EDC, you know, members are updated on the website, they're, you know, whenever their next meeting is. Like, some departments do a great job because there's someone in the office and some could probably use a little bit more help. So, I feel like we've probably vetted that out. Let me see if I have it. But it's really just like, like assigning each board and committee to a department, and then that department's really responsible for making sure that their website's updated and all that stuff. Because right now, if you go out there, it's kind of all over the place.
So, if you do that, so, assigning a department, so, now are you just adding more work to a department in Town Hall?
I don't think so. I think that it is just something, like, I think that planning should be supporting the groups that follow planning. I think Mike should be supporting the personnel board, you know, making sure those meetings happen. It's, like, personnel board's kind of a good example. They kind of haven't met in a year. They're, you know, a little, a little lost right now. I don't know if loss is the right term, but, you know, they haven't met in a while. It's just, you know, making sure each board has someone they're aligned to for that accountability, to make sure that they're meeting, to make sure that they have meeting minutes, to make sure that their members online are updated. And I think, I think we're talking small amounts of time committed to make sure the website's correct and that we're presenting...
Part of that, though, I put it on whoever is the chairman of said committee to make sure that their minutes are done. That should be a role as chairman.
It is.
Minutes, yeah.
So, but, but they can't post them to the town website. They need someone who is that liaison to be able to update the website with who their members are, to be able to post that stuff, to send out a meeting agenda. So, it's that liaison to help them with the stuff. Their responsibilities don't change. It's just someone else here that they're connected to.
Right.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, so on, like, the Planning Board one, yeah, I get it, it's Paige, but those ones, like the Child Sexual Abuse one, I mean, I just want to make sure from a town employee perspective, we're not saying, oh, by the way, now it's your job, now it's your job, now it's your job, like, adding more responsibility, so I just...
It could be the chair of those boards, you know, it could be as easy as that they need to send them by email to somebody. So, you're not asking them to, you know, a department head or somebody, somebody, whatever the town employees to take on more work. It might be just as easy as, hey, here's our minutes from our last meeting. Can you make sure they get on? So, it's an email and you're just forwarding an email. Like, you're not asking them to come up with...
Typing them or anything like that.
Yeah.
So, typically, the chairman of that committee would be the person that would talk to somebody in our office, somebody in the clerk's office, somebody in the, whoever it is that posts the meeting times, the dates, agenda, and then also the minutes.
Yeah.
So, it would be if, we'll have to go down, I have to look at that specifically, the list, to see how that would work, but it's probably a logical order for how that would go. It really isn't...
We tagged them all, and I think we came up with a pretty logical...
Yeah, I think some of them could, that, like, with the Child Sexual Awareness Abuse Committee, you know, Mark Craig and Deb Jodine are both on that board, so it might make more sense that they have the access to the website, and that's just easy, giving them, you know, access to that certain page that they would be responsible for doing that. And I think that that goes in part of the communication, so making sure that that liaison is, you know, there's clear communication, okay, the chair is going to have whoever the minute taker is, you know, go to Mark Craig and have him post the minutes, and he's in charge of that, and, you know, we have a system of checks and balances, so I think that goes about the communication part as well.
So, I found the list, like, Foxborough Cultural Council is one that we gave to town manager's office, Historical Committee, Liquor Control Agents, that falls under Public Safety, MBTA Advisory Board, that would fall under Planning, Municipal Hearing Officer, that's you, Norfolk County Advisory, the Permanent Municipal School Building, that would fall under Finance. You know, right now, like, we think we have it, but it's, there's really no plan, you know? So, it just kind of memorializes, again, getting back to that communication plan.
Well, just, it's just having a plan is half the issue. So, I mean, we've identified things, things tend to slip through the cracks when there is no plan.
Right, right.
Well, the goal, the goal is to come up with a plan.
Right, and that's how I found it out. I went to like every, every different site on the town website, and some of them were up to date, some of them were really out of date, and if, each department is just held accountable to make sure that they're, I mean, again, even if it does take them five more hours, I would think that's just part of their job responsibilities to make sure...
It's not all that difficult. I mean, for instance, we talked about the process for doing the warrant. Well, I did that in a day. I put it together in a day. So, it's not, it's a case of just putting it, putting the process, identifying it, then having people review it and make sure everybody agrees with it. And then, once everybody agrees with it, then we just commit it to a process that everybody agrees with.
But when we haven't talked through it, that's when questions come up.
That's when questions come up.
Look at us just talking through it tonight, how many different things we kind of come up with.
So, I think, you know, establishing a policy and procedure, which is really an important piece. So, that would be, you'd task me to come up with a policy and procedure that you would all agree to, right? And then, and then that would be part of the, that'd be the measurable goal for the year.
And it would take a lot of work off Christina's desk, like, now hopefully Christina could go to five liaisons who go out to their boards and make sure everything's right, instead of it being all, that was a lot of work. So, I think it would, I think it would be a little bit of work that would pay off in the long run. The next one, which is my H, it's your J. I already mentioned this one a little bit, but challenge each department to think of one or more ways they can positively enhance customer service with town residents and/or businesses. So, every department come up with a new way this year that they can make it easier for residents. I think that that's like an actionable thing that Bill could then hold the department heads to.
It's sort of kind of snowball right into reopening Town Hall. So, it's sort of like a softball right down the middle. All right, how are we going to enhance customer service with reopening Town Hall after three months of being closed?
And this one came from an example, my parents own a lot of properties in town, and they made a math error on their taxes. So, the whole five-figure tax check was sent back over a $20 mistake rather than, you know, quick pick up the phone, can you send 20 bucks? Like, we turned away almost $10,000 worth of revenue over a $20 math error. You know, like, that was one that had me thinking, like, how can we make this easier for the residents? For every department, just to think of something, maybe, you know, the library thinks of something, rec thinks of someone, every town clerk office.
I think there's, there's different procedures that require different things, and sometimes when you send, you know, a check, all sometimes it's not as easy, you have to know where to sign to. So, I think there, so, I think when you, when you get into those kind of things, it requires a little bit more than to understand that process. But I think the key in all of that, though, is that we are so used to doing things a certain way, and nobody ever asks the question, why do we do it this way? And so, I think that's, that's the most important question that we have to ask ourselves. Why do we do it this way? Is it written somewhere? Is it identified somewhere? Have we just done it this way because we've always done it this way? And we don't know why, but we just do it that way.
And can we do it better? Just to have everyone stop and think, you know? It could be anything.
Can we do it better?
No.
So, I think that's, I mean, I think a challenge every department to do that, that's, that's an easy one. Because, because in many ways, we should be doing that all the time, constantly. That's an evolving process.
And that could be a good message to come to the board of selectmen. Okay, here's every department's cost-saving initiative for this year and what they did to improve, you know, communication, and that's a good positive thing that goes out to citizens to see like, hey, you know, town government's looking to make things better and more, you know?
Customer service experience.
And cheaper. All right, all right. So, protect and enhance business and economic development. So, I have now made a, say, make a concentrated effort to communicate with local businesses, community clubs, and organizations to encourage communication between the town and, I have to change it from proprietors to those stakeholders?
Is it right?
Yes.
Yes, it's boring.
Guess I don't have to water my lawn tonight.
Nope.
Yeah, you asked for that with your new lawn. You jinxed us last time.
I was just washing down the street.
So, while we're on this one, can I make a recommendation for the goal prior? So, there's a couple of things in there that I think should get moved down into this goal.
Okay.
A couple of objectives. So, if I go off of G, the old G, where it says communicate and visit local business owners, community clubs, organizations, can we scratch business owners out of that one? So, it would be just communicate and visit local community clubs, organizations, schools to ensure the town's commitment to all residents. And then, the next one down, increase dialogue with business owners and committees in an effort, that should get moved down to business and economic development goal, I feel.
All right, so, make a concentrated effort to communicate with schools, community clubs, and organizations. You think that that goes back up?
That, that stays, but just scratch out business owners. So, it'd be just communicate and visit local community clubs, organizations, schools to ensure the town's commitment to all residents.
Are you guys at the same line? We're talking the old G?
Yep.
Yep, the old G. And then, the old H, that entire thing can get moved down into, into at least goal number three, and then we could, from there, figure out, it almost is the same as A?
It is almost the same as A.
Well, A, that one's gone now, so I just took that one, A, I just took that one out and moved it up. Make, I took A, took out businesses and added in community clubs. So, now, that A is gone because we're now covering it in one of the, one of the...
So, that's in enhanced business and economic development?
Yes.
Does it make sense to be there?
The community clubs and organizations? That's up in Communications. I took out business owners and put it up there because we've covered the business owners between the other ones, between B, C, D, and A.
Thoroughly confused now.
I apologize. I thought I had it too till a second ago.
So, I...
So, basically, Chris wants to move anything, business...
It should be with business and economic development, anything related to business.
Goal three, it's a goal three, yeah.
So, you wanted to keep A, but take businesses out of...
Yeah, okay, now, now I see, it's, okay, this Uptown, it ends in, especially in the Uptown area, that one goes down.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I'm with you now.
Yeah, H goes down.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't see that one up above, so I apologize. That's where I was.
And H is pretty darn close to A, with the sort of...
Yeah, and that one I got rid of, yeah.
Oh, okay. So you brought H down to A?
Yeah, so now A of protect and enhance business and community development says increase dialogue with business owners in an effort to have a more responsive and business-friendly community, especially in the uptown area.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Now, up above, now back up in communication, I have the one about schools, community clubs, and organizations.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, next one, work with town businesses to improve their opportunity for successful operations. Focus on issues like parking, ease of access, encouraging high-traffic areas. Do we feel like that one's a little repetitive with the master plan and develop a plan to make the? So one is about uptown. No.
I, I think B definitely is the town manager's role. The next two, I was like, those are the ones that I kind of just wrote Paige next to them.
Right.
Because they sound like they're all Paige.
I, I, I kind of thought all, all three were, but I could certainly carve out A.
Well, Bill had the master plan and his own goals. That was why I left this one.
Yeah, so, so I'm thinking, but, but in order to, to, you need to have a collaborative process to, to do a master plan. And you have, you need to have everybody participating in that process to be successful. So it means that if you take the encourage in retail space and appropriate housing in the uptown area, so to encourage and coordinate efforts to retain.
Retrain, retain and attract.
Correct.
Yeah, but the way, the way I read those, the old B, C, and D, your, your role is to work with the town businesses, improve the opportunity, successful operations, to kind of get the pulse out of everybody.
Yep.
It's Paige's job, I think, for encourage in retail space and appropriate housing in the uptown area. That's what Paige does all the time. So why should Bill be doing it and Paige doing it? I, I feel strongly that C and D.
So I, so really, she, she supports the, I, I support her efforts.
Right, and you support that by working with the businesses to improve their opportunity for successful operations and getting a pulse of what, what is going on with the community, the business community.
So Bill had a goal that said strategic planning dialogue, including a committee with benchmarks in alignment with the master plan on his. I would challenge this group that the master plan is about eight or nine years old now. From what I understand, they have a shelf life of about 10 years. So, you know, that's probably something that is coming up very soon. We probably have to start thinking about how that happens this year if we're gonna roll it out. And I don't know if that is how involved you are with that or if that is Paige.
Yeah, that's Paige. That's the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, we could possibly, you know,
We would work with them, yeah. Or you could actually, not even oversight, but you would have, you would, you would encourage them and you, and you would support their efforts.
Yeah.
In, in terms of how they're doing that, because that really is their role.
Right, you should sort of put B, C, and D together by saying, what you just said, Bill, encourage.
Encourage and support.
Support the present master plan and maybe support the.
Help support the, the issues of, are the, are the efforts to update, update and improve.
Correct. I think, I think that could be all three as, as a town manager.
It's not, because I don't lead that issue, but I support it.
Correct.
And it's really important to get people behind that effort. So I think.
Did you get that, Leah?
I think I did. Let me just read it to you. And I just made one quick change. So I have encourage and support the master plan and, no, encourage and support efforts to update and improve the master plan and the business districts is what I added, just because so that it's not just uptown.
Right, it's, it's all districts, across the, across the spectrum.
I would still add, though, in the beginning, Leah, the present master plan.
Okay.
And update, you know, planning for updating the master plan.
Yeah, and support the efforts to update the plan, support the efforts to update.
One of the things that a master plan needs is publicity as it's, as it's going through. Get people attending to hearings, attending the, the surveys and all that. And I think that's where this board gets involved as the planner is doing that. Because you're on TV, you talk about their master plan. And it's going to its thing. Because without local business and resident input into the master plan, you're not getting the flavor of what, what is needed.
But I will say, I mean, Paige does a lot with uptown, just because I've been really involved with like the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative and all that. And I would challenge you this year to maybe, I know it's Paige's wheelhouse, but maybe go to a meeting or stop by or just, you know.
Yeah, I have done it in the past.
Yeah, with, with, with the fire station and everything that will hopefully be coming this year. I think that there is an opportunity to allow Paige to own that, but maybe become a little bit more involved in pieces of that, like you are right now with like Route 1, you know?
Yeah, I am, but I, but previously, I mean, I've been involved, was involved in a lot of the downtown efforts initially. I mean, we had Jay Ash come out here one time and we spoke, you know, and spoke over at the, at the theater and had a lot of, and all the businesses came to part, as part of that effort. So it's a case of just continuing to support those efforts. And, and I'm happy to continue to do that because I think it's really important that we get the downtown redeveloped.
Alright, so encourage and support the efforts to support the current master plan and update and improve the future master plan and business districts. Is that too wordy or is that, I think that captured what everyone said?
Say it again.
Encourage and support efforts to, encourage and support efforts.
See, I think that has to be.
Related to the current master plan.
There you go.
Period. And then support efforts to update and improve future master plans and business districts.
Support and, and support and encourage the efforts of the planning board to, because it's really their document.
Okay. Encourage and support efforts related to the current master plan, period. Support and encourage the efforts of the planning board to update and improve the future master plan and business districts.
Right.
Yeah.
That covers it.
Sounds good. Okay, so I think we can, can we kind of get rid of the next one? Develop a plan to make the uptown area more.
Yep.
Yeah.
Fighting. That's kind of Paige, okay.
Yep.
Now, the next one is train-related and this kind of ties into goals that both Doc and Bill listed. I tried to kind of like plop them all together, but it doesn't mean that it's right. So collaborate with MBTA, CSX, and Mass Coastal Railway to have open lines of communication between the town and rail. Support the permanent Foxborough Communal Line in a way that positively enhances life for residents. And then you had quiet zones. We talked about that once and I thought that it was too cost prohibitive and risk and everything to do that, so I was kind of surprised to see that as one of the three main goals.
I don't, I don't think it's been thrown out.
Yeah.
It's just, when it, when it came up the last time we discussed it, it was right at the beginning of the budgetary process. And we were getting information on how costly it is. So I think it's backburnered, but I don't think it's off the table.
Well, I think, I think the, the key is that we have to understand what it's gonna cost, what the efforts go into, that go into doing that. Because we really don't have a good handle on that. And not only that, but you're seeing gates being placed in certain intersections as we speak. So that cost comes down automatically if that happens. So the, the, the key area that has been, the, the folks that have lived in the Spring Street area have all, have really pushed hard to try and get that to become a quiet zone. But we know that if we create quiet zone in one area, other people are gonna want it.
Right.
So I think we, we can't be, you know, thinking that it's gonna be a limited area.
So let me read what I just wrote. So collaborate with the MBTA, CSX, and Mass Coastal Railway to have open lines of communication between the town and rail. And again, that's Spring Street, that's North Street, that's just open lines of communication. Support the permanent Foxborough Communal Line in a way that positively enhances life for residents. And then support the initiatives related to the possibility of quiet zones in town.
So you could, I could, you can almost simplify that by saying collaborate with MBTA, CSX, Mass Coastal Rail, and state officials.
Okay.
Yep. To develop a comprehensive rail plan for the town of Foxborough.
Nice and easy.
I'm guessing there must be state regulations.
State and federal regulations.
It's, it's, it's all feds.
Yeah.
Yeah, state, state feds too.
First, I mean.
State and federal officials.
I get it how you don't want to hear, hear the, the blow of the horn, but it's for safety above, above anything, right?
But there are safe, there are safe, safe zones, quiet zones throughout the entire state.
Like Norfolk, for example, we looked into it before you joined.
Yeah. Oh, oh, they, they don't blow it at all.
They don't blow the horns, no. But you have to have gates at every one of the intersections.
And we accept some amount of risk too, right? If anything ever went wrong.
Yeah.
So we had a meeting that we talked about this briefly, but I think the way you just said it, I mean, it simplifies it all. Collaborate with MBTA, CSX, Mass Coastal Railway, and state officials to develop a comprehensive rail plan for the town of Foxborough.
Right. That addresses all the issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The problem with Spring Street, just since we brought it up, you go through, the train goes through town, it blows the horn and continues on and, you know, it's gone. Problem with Spring Street, though, is it's next to Mansfield and that's where they're putting the trains together. So every time they put a train together, come across Spring Street, they blow the horn. Then they bring the train back again to recouple up two or three more cars, they blow the horn. So it seems like every 10 minutes at certain hours.
It's not just during the schedule, yeah.
One trip down and it's kind of quaint and you hear it, you know, in your sleep. They're hearing it from 3:00 to 5:00 in the morning every five minutes or so.
So I think the last piece of that, Leah, should be included as well. So, so to develop a comprehensive rail plan that positive, positively enhances life for residents.
Okay.
Because I think that's important. We can't just develop a plan that nobody, that's gonna, that's gonna cause a whole lot of problems for everybody in the town. It has to be sensitized to that.
Right.
Okay.
Without getting into a big discussion, can I just ask one question? Because Leah, when you said the liability, the, the gates that are going out, is that is that the town is responsible for paying, or is that the railway doing that?
The state, the state's paying for all of that. We're not paying for that, but, but the, the issue there, Stephanie, is that if you end up where, where, say, for instance, the gates, and you created a quiet zone in Foxborough and the gates sort of malfunctioned for whatever reason and somebody went through and got hit by a car, hit by a train, we could be conceivably held liable for that because they didn't blow their horn.
Yeah, so it's the town bringing forward, trying to report a policy to create the quiet zones that would then would bring the liability back.
It has to be studied for us. There's a whole procedure for doing it. It's, it's, there's a federal requirement and state requirement that, that, and the state regulations and federal regulations that require us to study it thoroughly before we do it.
I, I know it's more of a discussion for another time.
Yeah, it's a, but it's a, it's a, it's a pretty involved process.
So let me read this hopefully one last time. Collaborate with MBTA, CSX, Mass Coastal Railway, and state officials to develop a comprehensive real time, rail plan that positively enhances the town of Foxborough and life for its residents.
I would suggest add federal and federal, state and federal officials. State and federal officials.
Okay.
Because we, we need to include them as well.
Got it. Alright, so going down to protect and enhance town operations. Hopefully a couple of these are just quick hits. Develop a formal succession plan for the town manager and other key roles.
Why do we need, no, just kidding. So, so the thing about this, this is really your issue, not my issue, but yours. So, but I, but I will, I, so, so you can't really say develop a formal succession plan for the town manager because ultimately, you're gonna be, you're gonna be the one that lives with that person.
I completely disagree with that. We have no idea what you do on a day-to-day basis.
No, 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 so, so let me finish, let me finish, right. So the other, so the way I, the way that works, the way I word this, or you, you want to word this, is assist the Board of Selectmen with developing a formal succession plan for the next town manager.
I think, I mean, Bill, you could, something could happen tomorrow and you could be gone and right now we have nothing. Like succession planning. Like I know in my job or think about in your office, if you.
Well, we do, because, because I've been teaching Mike everything I do and so he knows.
But is that in writing or is that like, in like, hey, you sit, I'm talking like a formal succession plan? Yeah, continuity plan, exactly.
Actually, your charter calls for that, that you, that the board would actually appoint someone in my absence. So that's, that's actually laid out in the charter.
I get that, but I'm talking about the day-to-day how it's done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, are we talking apples and bananas here? So are we talking this just because Bill is in the last part of his contract?
Yeah.
Okay, so it is up to our board to replace him.
Right.
So it's up to us to figure out like a reverse timeline, like, okay.
Yeah, exactly right.
When, when, when is your last day? When do we have to have a candidate by? So it, it is, it is up to us, yeah, Bill and Mike.
They'll actually put it to writing for you and then you can review it, then you can tell me what, what you like and what you don't like and add to it.
Yeah.
So.
I'm thinking of it a different.
You are, I was just gonna say, it is apples and bananas.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking the way Chris is thinking, what's our timeline for having that succession? Where you're thinking, what is my role?
Right, so that's.
What is my role on a day-to-day?
Like what do you do on a day-to-day basis if something were to happen and you are gone tomorrow? Yeah, like, in, in my job, in what I do and what you do, you know, that kind of succession planning like that. I'm talking more memorializing it, formalizing it.
Yeah, so it's a continuity binder.
When we're hiring to get it.
But you're gonna need both.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you're gonna have to put a second line in here.
I think that timeline is our board's goal, not his.
I, I read that as the, the timeline to replace him.
Gotcha, okay.
Right.
You know, so basically, I don't know if you have it, but like a continuity binder.
Well, it's, it's sort of like, yeah, it's a procedural, we don't have it formalized, no, but we could.
But like a list of all the things you do if anyone had to step, let's say someone had to step into your role tomorrow. Mike could be shadowing you, but there's gonna come stuff that is not written down or.
Truck binder, the so-called truck binder.
And I, I would suggest it shouldn't be just Bill, it should be every single department.
That has another key roles, yeah.
Yeah, every single department.
That part we have done.
That's actually been one of the key things that, that we've done during COVID is everyone who's got an administrative position or a management position or a department head position has put together a truck binder, which is, and I've never remember what the acronym, acronym is other than if they get hit by a truck, the person comes in, opens that binder, sees your responsibilities, sees your contacts.
Like when you stepped into your role, how helpful would it be if you had some?
It would have been extremely helpful, extremely.
Probably wouldn't have stepped into it if you saw the binder.
The truck binder, the acronym is training and resources, responsibilities. So your job description, everything else, your username and passwords and things like that. Oh my gosh, I can't remember Steve right now. Contacts, some important contacts, I forgot. Yeah, and then just, and then just random need to know, so.
Knowledge, like exactly that, like that is what Christina just described.
So do we have that?
So we, we are working on that.
So that.
There's a goal.
Change that to truck binder.
Okay.
And we have the template, we've built the template for the truck binders for all of our management.
And that's the piece that we're, we, we, the problem we've had doing it for our department is that we're so new collectively that we're all still trying to learn, I mean, not me, but, but they are.
We are building the plane while we're flying it.
Yeah, they're building the planes of fun.
That's the school, yeah, the school uses that one.
Right, yeah.
So, Bill, a fear? I think it's a fear question. I'm not, we're not making you give us a date.
Yeah, we already have it.
Yeah, we have it.
Oh, 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 alright.
So I made it abundantly clear.
I didn't want to ask you, like, what do you want to stop?
That's what I feel like, to me, that's clear. That's not a goal, we got that. So I changed this to develop a truck binder slash business continuity, continuity plan for town manager and other key roles.
That's right. We've already done it with the others.
Okay, yeah, my question was going to be, or question slash comment. So, okay, so you have a contract now for?
For three years.
For three years. So in your, so now that I know, I was just wondering, like, say, you, for us, for, what we would have to do, say you decided to go before that three years, like, would it be, oh, on, on something unforeseeable if you decided that I'm done tomorrow? Like, would it have been, okay, I'll, I'll give you, you know, give you guys a six-months window that that's when we have to stop the process?
Yeah, you should go on to board docs, all the contracts, his are on there, every, the police chief, fire chief.
Yeah.
It's all specified.
But Bill did promise us that he's not gonna leave us. I was gonna put it on the record again.
Short of the truck, he's not leaving us.
Well, now, now, now the curiosity has, has piqued me. So what's, what is the date? Obviously, that was before.
Well, theoretically, the way it's gonna work is that I'm gonna work as, under my current terms and conditions of employment until March 31st of 2023. And then from my, April 1st till June 30th, so that I make it through town meeting and, and, and start the end, and close out the fiscal year, I'll, I'll work as a consultant.
Oh, so, so you, your, your goal right now is you're, you're staying through your contract?
That's right, exactly.
Okay, okay.
And I think that this goal, this goal next year will look different and we're getting a little closer to the, to the, to the end.
Yeah.
And the reason.
Quote-unquote, to kind of fine-tune that.
And, and the reason I structured it that way, Stephanie, I mean, full disclosure to everybody here, is that, anybody who's watching, is the fact that I can actually retire on February 1st of 2023. I, I reached max in terms of my ability to, under the pension system. So, but, so therefore, it doesn't make sense for me financially to stay if I go beyond. Alright, so this, we, the way we figured it out was I would stay on as a, I would stay for one more month and then stay as a consultant to the end of the year.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to have to try to do town meeting with him leaving a couple months before that, so.
So can we just enhance the other key roles?
Yeah.
To ensure all department heads have the truck binder completed or?
So develop a truck binder business continuity plan for town manager and all department heads.
We've already started that process, so that's already underway.
Be an easy goal for you to achieve.
And hopefully we can see that one when you finish it, because I'd be excited to see it. Okay, the next one was one I moved down, Chris. So this was continued communication between town government and school business administration for open and transparent engagement and succession planning. So that was one we moved from up above down.
So when we talk succession planning there, are you also talking a truck binder or are you talking?
I think that's, I think that's more working together to not be as siloed as we are today. Because that may look different in the future. Develop standard operating procedures and a RACI chart for key, for key annual activities such as town meeting. And RACI chart is responsibility, accountable.
Yeah.
See, I can't, I'm blank. Consult and then.
And inform.
And inform. So there's different, you know, Bob may, we're gonna make a chart of everything we need to do for town meeting. What Christina has to do, what Bill has to do, what Bob has to do. It has everyone on the chart and it would say like Christina is responsible for this. Bill's responsible for this. And it kind of goes through every task and who does what. And I think, Bill, you already have started this.
Yeah, I already, I already actually developed the RACI chart, but the, the thing about it is that what, what that led me to do was to develop a procedure by having the RACI chart, it was, it was pretty easy. Because it just tells you who's responsible for what.
And I think we should do that for the budget process too, so.
Yeah, we actually talked about that.
The next one, continue to ensure the successful transition to regional dispatch. Support the creation and implementation of the housing production plan. So again, he's supporting it, he's not responsible for it. Because that's coming fast and furious. Paige is working hard on that. Make operations more streamlined and cost-efficient by introducing technology where appropriate. Refresh town policy manual and ensure all town employees and boards' files are in compliance and adhere to all policies. and adhere to all policies and procedures. Um, and under that, just to mention, um, we all got an email from MMA about open meeting law training.
I just saw that.
I'm gonna take it, it's next, it's July 15th, so especially...
Did I, did we send it out? Because I just, did you all get that?
I registered for it, I get it.
No, but did, did everybody get it, because we, because I sent it out?
I didn't get it.
I sent it to Mike, actually, to, I sent it to you, just to make sure we send it out to all the board members.
And Christine, if you haven't already talked to MMA to switch David and her, I remember, it took me a little bit, and Amanda definitely had to, like, intervene and make sure that they had my right email address. So, there's a lot of free training right now, um, and I think that we should take advantage of that where we can. I think we're having, are we having the code of conduct training next?
Two weeks.
It is happening?
Fourteenth.
Okay. Um, and even like something like that, like, I'm of the opinion, it must cost a lot to have our town attorney drive down here, do a five o'clock session, have a break, and then do a seven o'clock session.
It does not, we have one retainer.
He's just not, okay, so there's no cost to that. And, you know, hopefully, we can tape it and, you know, and have that for people. I won't be there, because I actually dug through my records and I found a copy of it, I took it with Pat. Um, so, you guys might have too, Doc and Chris, if you look back.
I did, but I'm gonna sit in on it anyway.
Um, I just did it in 2019, so it's, it's, it's pretty recent.
So, and I'm looking at the last two, and those are pretty broad. So, I mean, there are, so there, there were areas that cross over to things I have no control over.
So, here's my thought on this, and I have said this to you. Ensure all new bylaws, processes, strategic improvements are successfully implemented on, in an agreed-upon timeline. I feel like we talk about a lot of stuff, but in some cases, it's not intentional. Life happens, and we just forget to follow through on stuff. So, I think if we talk about something in a meeting, or, you know, if Doc and Chris, uh, Doc and Bill talk about something, just making sure that someone is accountable and that we follow through on the type of things that we discuss.
Process is what we're doing that.
Yeah, it can be any, any new process, any bylaw, any, any, if we, a strategic improvement. If we talk about doing something, just making sure that we do it.
So, so I think what you're trying to say there is ensure that a procedure is in place. Um, that all new bylaws, processes, and strategic improvements are successfully implemented, agreed upon in time, in, in an agreed-upon timeframe.
In the agreed-upon time, timeframe?
Yeah, in a, so a proceed, ensure that a procedure is in place. All right, so we get, so developing policies and procedures, same thing with the one above.
I don't know that it's a procedure, though, I think it's just like, if we say like, hey, Bill, can we make sure? I don't know, something that we've talked about throughout the years happening, like the budget process or whatever, just making sure that we, we do it. I mean, we, you and I have talked about this, like, the communication thing, we've talked about that before. We just, life happened and we just haven't got around to it. So, when we talk about something, I think that we just need to make sure that it happens.
I guess my point is, I, I guess what I'm saying to you is that you're saying, you should ensure all new bylaws, processes, and strategic improvements are...
I take bylaws out of there.
Okay.
Yeah, you follow me? Because I, I don't control all the bylaws.
No.
So, let's just say processes and strategic improvements are successfully implemented in the agreed-upon timeframe.
All new processes and strategic improvements, right?
That's fair.
Yeah.
Ensure, and, and the one above, ensure all towns and boards and files are in compliance. And here's, well, to the extent that we know, that's the problem.
That's our job to know, though.
Yeah, but no, but there are things that if they don't share it with us, we're not gonna know.
But you need to find out then.
Isn't that really the Mike's role and job?
Well, yes and no, but I, I think that, I think what we need to identify with, and that's, part of the reason is that you don't have a centralized control over everything, or most of the things you do. But for instance, you have elected boards that have their own rules and procedures that they do, and then many of them like, may not always share that information.
So, I mean, it could be processes and improvements that you own.
Yes, but to the extent that I might have control over it, yes. Absolutely, there's no issue with that.
So, so reread it again, uh, Liam?
Ensure that all new processes and strategic improvements that you own are successfully implement, implemented in the agreed-upon timeframe.
Yeah, and, and the other one above, ensure all town employees and boards, board files, uh, under the, under, under the direction or under the control of the town manager are in compliance. You follow me?
Sure that all town employees and board files under...
Under the control of the town manager.
But even like, like police, for example, we know that they have their own files up there.
Right, but, but the police chief reports to me, so that's, that's not an issue.
Okay.
But, but there are, there are still some elected boards that I don't have control
Okay.
over everything they do. I mean, I do to some degree, but not everything.
I mean, my biggest thing is like, we've been talking about the social media policy, for example, for...
Two years.
Two years, we haven't done anything. Like, you know, it's more stuff, I'm talking more of stuff like that, just making sure that, even like when we talked about the code of conduct, I said, do we need to do it every year, every three years? We don't really know. It's just stuff that are, that's like that, that's simple, that we have control over.
Don't forget, the last year, we lost three key board members, uh, staff members. And that's, that's what, that's what contributed to that, for the most part.
But, and I've said this to you, to me, that's an excuse. That's like, well, we didn't do that because there's turnover, or, well, we didn't do that because of COVID. Like, we need to make a goal, though, that we're gonna do it, because there's always gonna be something that comes up.
No, like, we actually had the goal in place. But then, when you lose the key staff member, you can't finish that goal, that's the challenge. So, it's, we're, we're back doing what we, what we intended to do.
Right.
So, you follow me? So, we're, it's not, it's not, it's really, it's, it's some, it's beyond your control sometimes. So, I think you have to be able to state why that hasn't been met, or what steps are being taken to, to, to correct it.
But I think like the social media policy, that had nothing to do with Amanda or Pam leaving.
Um, it certainly had, had a lot to do with Pam, to Amanda leaving, absolutely. Because the social...
Amanda driving it?
She was the one driving that.
No, HR was driving that, when I met...
Oh, the social, are you talking to social media?
Yeah, like, social media policy, we've been talking about that for two years.
The social media policy or...
Yeah, we've been talking about the social media policy for two years, and that...
About in compliance with the social media.
I am talking about, yeah, and ensure all town employees and boards, like, their personnel file is in compliance and that they adhere to all town policies and procedures. Because I bet right now, if we went out, like, Steph, you started, have you signed the code of conduct? Have you signed the social media policy? Ed, have you, you know, and this is just our own board right here, never mind every other board, every other employee that's sitting at a desk somewhere. Because remember, again, we don't have an online system that Mike can just run a report. It's like in a file somewhere, so who knows how accurate that is. And I think that's really important for us to get our arms around.
So, on the 14th, you know, moving to the here and now, on the 14th, we're, we're doing the, the standards of conduct and civility training, and, you know, at the same time, I talked to our HR attorney, and I, and I think I included in the email, that the follow-on to doing a series of these code of conduct civility trainings, the next one is social media, so that's this summer.
Yep. And, and I, for me personally, I know we may not all feel the same, but I would much rather get like a Zoom link and attend a training maybe during the day or at home via video than have to come in and...
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna tape all of the sessions.
Okay, good, so we'd be able to tape it.
So, we're gonna tape those sessions, and then we're gonna be able to, so somebody can actually pull them up if they need to.
Or even like when Pat's here, like, we could have a Zoom link and have, you know, I know we had a new board of health member who came in and sat in our meeting, and we have Jeff Peterson, who's kind of newer to Planning Board, like, I know that we think about our own boards, but really, when it comes to those other boards, it's not really, the department heads aren't thinking about HR policy. That's our job in the town manager's office, to be thinking about that stuff.
So, so where, where did the social media policy go? I, I know I, just because, you know, even being on advisory committee, you know, uh, before sitting with you guys, I, you know, hear little bits and pieces, I don't know. So, do we actually, somewhere in our town, um, policy? Is it, is it now in there?
So, it resides on the HR webpage? If you look on the policies, those policies all, all sit there. What we're talking about now is, is training.
And having it in everyone's file that they've received and read it.
The rest of the people that haven't received that training.
I mean, everyone, I, I mean, I will say, when I got on advisory committee, Frank didn't lay down the law, but he suggested it would be a good idea to stay away from, you know, if you wanna go on some of the, you know, on, on Facebook or anywhere and, and read, read some, some of the comments or things, but he just said he suggested at that, that point, that's three years ago. And I took it pretty seriously, I just think it's, I think if you, if you decide that you want to sit on one of our boards or, or, you know, or committees, you need to take a responsibility that your words on Facebook, any other social media, isn't always taken as your personal opinion.
That's right.
And so, I mean, I wasn't sure what our...
It's not, yeah, you...
Yeah.
For town employees, that goes even a step further.
I just don't comment on anything anymore. It's, you know, it was a personal decision, and I'm probably figuring out that's, that is sitting on this board now, that is what is expected of me.
Right, people will sometimes take you as, as a member of the Board of Selectmen's position, is that's, that's what their position is now, when in fact, it could be your personal opinion.
But we've had people that have said, hi, my name's so-and-so, and I'm on this board, and here's what it is, and, you know, or, you know, employees of Town Hall, I think we need to make sure that everyone just gets the same information and has it in their file.
The challenge, and this is important for everybody to hear this, the challenge for us is this. We deal with the employee issues, that's pretty straightforward for us. I mean, you violate a policy, we deal with it. Person who, who volunteers for a board, gets elected to a board, you violate a policy, there's not a lot we can do about it. That's the reality.
At least if you've received and read the policy and signed it and understand it, that's different than never being presented with the policy, in my opinion.
So, I think you can be held accountable for the fact that you read it, you, you've been, you've read it, and you're, and you're supposed to know that that's what you're supposed to follow. But at the end of the day, if you don't follow it...
There's no teeth.
There's no teeth.
But there's really no teeth if we don't even present it to someone.
There's teeth when it comes to reappointing a person.
Correct, that's the only, you know, reappointment or reelection.
I mean, the biggest thing, Mike, HR, we should have a policy manual, and we should have a full file for everyone who's an employee or board member. I don't think we're there right now. That's where I'm getting at for the goal on this one.
Okay.
Um...
So, we do for every employee.
Yeah, so, for every board member, so were you saying that the HR person should have it for every board member? Or should...
When Mary Beth was here, that was my understanding. I was oriented, I signed every policy, it went into a file.
So, Planning Board or, um, any of those boards, it should be in HR, and is it? And is that...
My personal opinion, and based on everything that happened last year and recommendations that came from an outside professional, every board member and every employee should have the code of conduct trained and in their file.
But, but his question is, who's keeping the file?
I, I think that it should be, I think it should be with Mike.
It has to be housed somewhere, right?
Yeah.
So, the, the logical place is to put it in HR.
In the town manager's office.
Now, so the problem is this, is that we're very good about treating, getting the employees up to speed on that. We're still, we need to do a better job collectively, including myself, of getting the, the appointed and elected officials to, to do that. And, and we need your help on that, too, because if we can't get them to do it, guess what happens? It comes back on us. So, I think we need to, if we have a situation where somebody's not signing it, or somebody's not following it, we're gonna come back to you and say to you, because if that's our goal as an organization, which I think is good, that, that's how we're gonna, we're gonna have to deal with that.
We were told we needed to have that by an outside party.
I can see your face, I can't, I don't remember.
Yeah, right, so, and right now, I don't know if either, like, I just, again, it's just getting back to, you can't trust every department head to do it, so I think this should be our goal, that if anything, God forbid, anything ever happened, and someone didn't have this in our file, it would, it would be a silly mistake to make that's so easy. Maybe we plan like an orientation day every May, and every elect, new elected person just makes an appointment with you, whatever their convenience is, it's probably only three or four people.
We chose the month of July for that reason, because it's the first month of the new fiscal.
I was just gonna say, why don't we just make it a policy, a board policy? Any board, you know, elected or appointed, their first meeting in the July, they do all of the required training, paperwork, documentation, anything. Fill it out, go through a, whatever the training is, and end it in every year.
Yeah, it's simple, but we're not doing it, and I think it shouldn't be July, I think it should be the first week after the election. Because you don't want someone to be in their seat for two months before we get around to doing that.
The only reason why we suggested July is because at that point, everybody's appointed, including all the, the new appointees on committees and boards are all there, and then the election, this year, the election was late in the year, so we ended up having...
And I just thought of it because it's the start of the fiscal year, too.
I just, I think that if the election's normally May 5th, 6th, we shouldn't have someone in a meeting that hasn't received and read that policy, based on the outside advice that we were given.
You can certainly give it to the person, I, I think what we're trying to do is, is to, is to try and limit the number of training sessions we're gonna have, for doing it.
Yeah, then it's just, it's reading, it's reading a policy.
I have to do the training for advisory committee, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I, I, so I think, now, whether that's up to date with, with how you want it, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do all this again, but I, I think only, only because I sat on advisory committee before here, I, I sat through those, those, um, the code of conduct, and, and we had to sign, and... So, whether that's in with Mike, I'm not sure, I'm guessing it was.
Yeah, it will be.
Mike, you were here that night, I know you were kind of running it, we were signing in and stuff, so I'm guessing, for me at least, but you, you're, you're right, if I hadn't sat on advisory committee, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have taken that at this point.
Question to Mike, Mike, do you have, as human resources, everybody in your computer with everything that they have to sign off on?
I do.
You do, so you could pull up like an Excel sheet that everybody in the town of Foxborough...
All the, all the town employees.
All the town employees. Could you set up a similar database, especially having just updated all our committees and, um...
So, so, see, they...
Do the same thing.
Therein lies, I mean, I think the elected officials, we might be able to deal with that on a different level, but the appointments, once they're made, and we have to create the databases, so if those people are all into a system, then we can create that database, and then create the, the training schedules. We're gonna do training on this date, this date, this date. And then we'll, and we'll have it taped, so if you can't attend it, you'll have to do it.
And even the code of conduct, I mean, I would argue that you probably don't even need, you just need to read it, be nice to people, be professional, I mean, you know, it's at least being presented with it. I think we can make up a thousand and one scenarios of why it's hard or why it's difficult, or we can make a goal to, um, try to get everyone to do it. And I think everyone should be doing it, and we need to drive it out of this office.
So, either Bill or Mike, um, so basically, I'm getting what you're saying is, there's, there's no control, we, we can't have, for lack of a better word, I don't even know if it would be a bylaw, but there isn't something that we can put in place, maybe as the Board of Selectmen, that would say, if, you know, if you sit on a committee, whether it's appointed, elected, a policy.
Policy, there's no control.
Could we have a policy that says you, um...
I think it's already in the policy.
Yeah, there's no teeth right now if somebody breaks it, but could we have a policy that says if you don't, you could be removed from that position, or no?
No.
We could never do that.
We've looked into this, it's now.
There's no removal process, so, so go ahead, Mike.
Sure, so, so it's easy to have the, you know, the, the policy and procedure to, to do the training, you're required to do it, but the removal is the difficult part.
Okay.
And that is, that's up to this board. If it's an elected person, that's up to the residents.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, okay, yeah.
If it's appointed by this board, it's up to this board to not reappoint.
Reappoint, okay.
And we have been told by the labor attorney, this is a very, very difficult process to remove someone who's on an appointed board before their term is up.
Unless there's a bylaw, or it's in your, your, your charter or special act, you, you're gonna even have a different, more difficult time, because you're...
Well, not that social media is new, but these aren't challenges that people had going back, you know, you know, 15, 20 years ago, now, now, these are challenges that are, we're faced with.
We did, because we didn't have those policies in place.
Yeah.
But getting back to what we're talking about here, what we do have and what we can control is just making it a goal, that we have the policies, and that we have everyone review them. And we can't control people adhering to them, or whatever, but we can make a goal, that we have the policies, and we present them to everyone. And I can't really imagine any appointed or elected official in good faith saying, I'm not gonna abide by the code of conduct.
And it's, and I will tell you that everybody in this room, and virtually everybody I've dealt with, would, will do it. But at the end of the day, if they say they wanna go rogue one day, and say, look, I'm not doing it, you know, that, that creates a different challenge.
And, and I'm reading from the policy now, it does say, no employee, member of a board, commissioned, or committee, or any other person engaged or acting on behalf of the town of Foxborough. So the policy does cover everyone, so I don't think we need a bylaw on top of that.
We're trying, we're trying to set the right tone for the community, for communicating the community.
Okay. We good with that one? Last one.
Yeah.
So I have set an example to lead with a culture of transparency, customer service, and consistent follow-up and follow-through. I heard a quote that said, we don't ignore problems, we address them head-on. That, like, I, I went to some municipal government thing, and Gina Ortiz-Jones mentioned that, and it just kind of like stuck with me. So it's just, it's, again, going back to the culture that I, Bill and I have talked about a lot, about like a culture of doing things right the first time, rather than, well, we didn't write, do it right, but here, and here's all the reasons, like, let's just try to get it right and plan accordingly.
That means setting realistic timelines, and making sure that the expectations are, are aligned with, with that.
So set an example to lead with a culture of transparency, customer service, and consistent follow-up and follow-through. I mean, I think everyone and everything that they do should be, like, that's just kind of like a little golden rule, you know?
That's pretty standard, that's a pretty standard approach.
So then the only other two, and I won't go through all of them, that I didn't find a home for, Stephanie, you had, in conjunction with Chief Grace, review police department policies for signs of racial and gender bias, as well as our department trainings on physical force. I thought that might be a Chief Grace goal, not a Bill goal.
Yeah, totally agree with you.
Okay, so, yeah, Ed, I'm curious, you know, what Ed thinks, too, but
Well, you could, you could have a situation where the, where the town manager engages, engages with the, the police chief to address that issue, because that's
And that, as your, as the town manager, Bill, I, I'm not expecting you to go down and step on, you know, um, Chief Grace's toes by any means, but just with what's happening,
Yeah.
You know, um, I mean, we were lucky, there was peaceful protests out here.
We've had three of them.
Yeah, no, no issues. But, um, and I have lots of faith that we have a great police department, and I would be shocked if we ever had an issue that's happening in, in some of these other areas of the country. But just to make sure that, you know, and I'm guessing that's part of the, Chief, maybe I'll, I'll refer to you with, that, I know these things should be trained for, when you're becoming a police officer. I would just, I was just looking for you as a town manager. Not, not, maybe it's not your goal to make sure, maybe the goal is to touch base with our public safety, and just
Or maybe the goal, I was thinking, maybe the goal's not even police-specific, it's under-town operations, but, you know, have policies for signs of racial and gender bias, and, and department training, I don't, the physical force applies, but, I mean
That could happen, you know, I think I went towards police, because that's what's going on right now, but you, you're right, that could be in any department, you know, not, maybe not the, um, physical force, but, but, you know, the racial and gender bias, you know.
To be specific, you know, every year, Mike's responsible for making sure that every staff member goes through a certified in-service training program, not just the twenty-week academy they go through, to review that. And I know, uh, because of how he was trained, um, that he would make sure that that mandate is met. And when we're discussing classes, you know, in law, you know, these different issues that we've seen recently are brought up as discussions. And how to be more cognizant of how you treat people is much more in vogue with the reality now, as opposed to, you know, what we used to do in, I don't know, nineteen seventy-three. You know, because there's like two different worlds, and you have to navigate in this world we live in.
Right, absolutely.
So do we think that would land here, or do we think that that would be more on Chief Grace's?
I, I believe it's, would be more on what Michael's doing in light of what's going on in our society.
Okay.
So, I mean, clearly, I can
I'm okay with that.
I can, I can, and certainly, from a support perspective, Mike knows that I have his back on this issue.
Yeah.
So I continue to support his efforts in trying to address that issue within his department, and within the community.
Yeah.
And so we talk a lot, you know, we've talked in the past few weeks, a lot about situations that have evolved, and I say, how do you want me to handle this, and how do you wanna, how do we wanna address this? And he's handled it very, very well. I mean, I, he's taken a lot of responsibility.
Well, and why it even break flag to me is, you know, we, we're, we, we see the, the mayor of Boston come, you know, speak about it, we see the governor, and, um, so it really wasn't a, a goal that I thought we have a problem with here. I think we have a phenomenal police department, but it's just, this is what's going on in the world.
So, so let me just tell you one significant difference between the mayor and the governor, both of those are chief elected officials, all right? You all are the chief elected officials here.
Yeah.
All right, so, so, and I work for you, and I carry out your policies, I don't set your policies, I, I follow through on your policies. So if you have an issue with any one of the things that we just taught, you just talked about, and identified there, you can have that conversation with me, and I'll take it out with, take it up with the police chief.
Yep.
You follow me?
But I would challenge that, just like we're giving you goals, instead of just working off those generic ones that are out there, I think this shouldn't be a lot of work for you. I think you should ask each department head to come up with, like, goals and objectives, if they're not already doing that.
That's how we, we work off of the, this, I have to work off of this document to get to that point. I mean, up until now, we've, I more or less have done that on a year-to-year basis, based on the priority needs that have been going on in the community. But now, this actually helps to clarify my role, and the things that are important to you as, as a board, so I can then carry them, and pass it on down to the, to the various departments.
So here's the last one that I didn't find a home for, and quite frankly, I didn't know what it meant, and maybe we covered it with the train one, but legislative delegation meeting with the board, federal and state reps.
So I, I think in that, I don't know if that came from me, or if it was
That came from you.
Okay, so, we, we have not, near as I can tell, I haven't seen a meeting between your federal delegation, meaning your, your, your state, and I don't know if you're gonna get your senator to come, but you're certainly gonna get your congressman to come, to update you on what's happening on the federal level. You've not really asked the state, or, or state rep, or the state senator to come on a, on a, you know, once a biannual basis, to say, let's have an update from you. So I think, I think that would be something that you, you wanna develop that relationship, because there are gonna be times where you need those people to do things for this town. And knowing that, that you have a good relationship, sound relationship with those folks, it's gonna be beneficial for this community.
Yeah, we, with, um, the state rep, state senator, we used to, back in the older days, have them once a year, just to come in for an update, so I agree with that. I think it is, with, especially with the federal grants that we've been getting
Right.
to maybe try to schedule, um, you know, once a year, once every other year, whoever the congressman is for our district at the time. It, it would be tough to get a senator, but
Right, but I think you could get Congressman, the Congressman, Kenneth Kennedy, I mean, he's running for senate now, so that could be a little bit more challenging to get him in here now. But certainly, um, you know, just having that relationship and dialogue, and then given, and then, you know, when you have, when he's able to update you on what's going on in the community, on his, on his level, and their, and their collective level, level. And I know they're more than willing to come in here and do that for you. I know, at least I know Jay and, and Paul would be happy to do it. And I'm sure Joe would, too, for that matter. But the, all three of those people would be happy to give you an update on what's happening in their world, so that you can have a better understanding what's happening on, on the various levels of government.
So that almost should be a chairman's goal, whoever the chairman is
Yeah, I think that's more our goals than
To get him in
Get him in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Let's go, Doc.
Duly noted.
But I'll set that up, I'll set that up.
And, and the department, it kind of ties in with that, like, hearing from certain department heads. There might be some that you think right now, like, wow, we could really hear from, like, like Chris said, you know, DPW maybe about the dams, or whatever it is, um.
That's easy for Bill to set up for the board, because he already does a monthly meeting with our state rep, and a, you know, in a, a slightly less frequent one with the
With the state senator.
So he could easily set that up at your convenience.
Doc, you got between now and September first to get Kennedy in here. Let's go.
It's a goal.
Goal, my goal.
Believe me, you may, he may find it, actually, he's willing to come out, because it's, it's FaceTime in front of a camera, it's, it's also, you know, the press will be here to cover it, it'll be a good thing for him.
We'll talk about that Thursday.
Yeah.
So I think that we have them down. Do you want me to reread them? Do we wanna circulate them and vote on them next meeting? What
I would like to see them
Two, option two.
Okay.
I think it's late.
Yep.
I, I think, um, we gotta redo it.
Yep.
Send it to us through Bill, because you can't send it to us directly.
Yeah, I'll send it to Christina.
Oh, yeah, Christina, obviously.
If I, if I see anything, if I make, you know, slight modification along the way, I'll review it with you first before I do it.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I would basically say
Wording, wording pieces.
Consider these are the goals and objectives, until we can
And it just needs like a proofread to make sure that I didn't, you know, as I'm typing and
Yeah, and then we'll make sure it's an agenda item, uh, next Tuesday.
So I probably won't be here next Tuesday, unless, I don't know if there's anything crazy on the agenda, I am on vacation. I could drive back for it, but
We'll, we'll know better Thursday.
Okay, yeah, I'll
I don't think anything
Do a Zoom meeting.
I could Zoom in, yep, I, I love Zoom.
Yeah. If there's something on it, zoom in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't go
Don't drive all the way back.
All right, so I will save these and send these to Christina to circulate.
Yeah, Christina will look at it, proofread it, Bill will proofread it, and then send it to us.
Okay.
And Mike, can you just, um, give the dates that, um, that the training's gonna be, just so I make sure
Sure, next training is on July fourteenth, it's two times, five o'clock and seven o'clock right here.
Okay.
And so that is, um, was scheduled to have, you know, to be social distance and all that, and, and I wanted to offer that up to this board first, and then around to others. And then we'll be recording that as well, so people can go back and, and watch the video of the training.
I think we should think about a Zoom, too, I mean
Is there something on the fifteenth, too, or just the fourteenth?
Just the fourteenth.
Just the fourteenth, okay.
And then there will be a future date.
The fifteenth was the, uh, open meeting law, two to three PM.
Okay, here, here, they're both here.
No, no.
No, no, no.
The fifteenth is Zoom meeting.
Oh, 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 okay.
Zoom meeting.
But I will, I do plan to attend that, and I think that's one that, I know when I first started, and probably when you guys started, we used to have Bob do one of those. I don't think we've done them in a couple of years, so we should probably think about that one, too.
We actually, that, that literally came in this afternoon around five o'clock, so
Could I, while we're on TV, could I give a quick update on the opening of Town Hall? Because that'll happen before your next meeting.
Yeah.
Just a real brief, um, so
Three hours, Mike.
So you, this'll take two minutes. So you saw a sign when you came in, um, if you didn't, you know, you'll see it on your way out of the screening questions that people will be asked when they come in here. It's similar to what you've seen when you've gone into, you know, other places. Um, so there'll be a greeter at the, at the desk when, when people come in, there'll be a sandwich board out on the sidewalk, that you'll, the folks will see something in the newspaper this week, as well as social media and the website of the expectations when they come. We don't want people to be surprised. The expectations are, come in wearing a mask, if someone shows up without a mask, we'll have masks available on the table, we'll have hand sanitizer on the table. And then the greeter, whoever that is, um, will be asking, you know, those, those series of questions. One of the ones in the past that you've seen when you've gone to places, is have you had a temperature above? That's one that's been dropped off the list, because there's been different numbers, and it's not one of the most reliable symptoms, so don't, don't be surprised if that's not one of the questions, it won't be. The other things are, you know, breathing difficulty, respiratory problems, coughing, you know, et cetera, you'll see the list. And we will get that out there in the paper and so forth, so people will know what they're gonna be asked when they get here. That greeter will be behind the Plexiglas shield that you've, you've seen there. And we are encouraging people to still use the online bill payment, to still do online permitting and licensing, to call for an appointment, because right now, we're up to fifty percent capacity in the building, but that means we can only have about a dozen, you know, residents in at a time, because that includes, you know, the, the staff as well. Those numbers do not include the number, you know, the ten people in this room, or, you know, the people that are in the other conferences, just the rest of the office space. But those are things that people can expect. It'll be different when people come back in a time, you all have been coming here, you know, twice a month, but folks that haven't been in here in three and a half months, so it'll be different. We don't want people to be shocked when they come in, uh, we don't want them to feel like they're being berated or barraged, because they're being asked questions. It's just to protect their health, to protect the health of the, the employees here, so that they can continue to serve as folks come in. It will be different, and we don't want them to be surprised.
Great, thanks, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Uh, you don't have it in front of you, but I'll accept a motion.
I would make a motion for us to return.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think it was a great, great two hours.